Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the November 19, 2019, November 19, 2019 Garner Town Council meeting. The mayor couldn't be here this evening, so I will be presiding in his absence. We're going to start our meeting this evening if you will all consider rising and joining me for a pledge of allegiance to honor our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, I guess I should ask you to call the roll maybe before I have the invocation. I think I missed that earlier, is that right? Okay.
Mayor Pro Tim Marshburn.
I'm present.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Vance.
Here.
Okay. At this time, it's my pleasure to recognize Mr. Lee Smith, who is one of the chaplains for our police department, who will come forward and offer our invocation. Thank you for being here on short notice, Mr. Smith.
You're welcome. Would you bow with me as we pray together? Dear wise and loving Father, first off tonight, Father, we thank you on behalf of all those who are gathered here tonight. Father, we thank you for your abundant blessings to this town. Father, we thank you for life itself, Father, for the measure of health that we need to fulfill each of our callings. Father, for the sustenance and for the friendship that represented in this room. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. We thank you for the freedom to embrace you or for the freedom to reject you. We thank you for loving us even though we may not understand your boundless nature and graciousness. Father, we know that in the scriptures you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, it is tonight that I pray for the various levels of city officials, for those in this town, Father, who work so diligently and serve it, for this assembled council. And tonight, Father, I pray specifically for them that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the many interests and issues, a sense of welfare and true needs of the people here in Garner, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence, Father, in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and, Father, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them tonight. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in our beloved town, for it's in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, sir. I'm going to take just a quick moment of personal privilege, and since we're this close to Thanksgiving, take a moment to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. Probably won't see you in the meantime, but I hope you have a safe holiday and you'll be blessed by stopping and pausing and giving thanks for all of your blessings. Okay, it's now time on the agenda for what we call petitions and comments. It's a portion of the meeting when we receive comments from the public on items not included in the agenda. We hope you've signed up in advance if you wanted to speak, and I believe the town clerk indicated there were not any persons who desire to, but at this time, I will ask, are there any persons here who desire to come forward and make any comments? Okay, hearing none. Counsel, I will ask you to, what is your pleasure as relates to the adoption of the agenda?
Do we adopt the agenda as presented if there are no special sessions based from the attorney?
I'd like to have a closed session at the end.
With the addition of a closed session, it will be specified at the end with the appropriate statute by the attorney.
Okay. Are there any other amendments or additions to the agenda that anybody cares to make? I'm going to do that to the consent agenda. Oh, you want me to do it now?
Do it now.
Okay. There is an item, council members, as relates to the consent agenda under, it's on page 11 in your agenda packet, but it has to do with the, I'm trying to find it, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, the abatements for fees due for the town abating different nuisances. And 402 West Garner Road came in and paid their fee prior, after we had printed the agenda, so when you approve that, we're going to omit that one from the final resolution that gets signed.
Okay. With that noted, do I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
First, we were adopting the agenda, and I made that motion.
Excuse me, you're right. Thank you, Mr. Singleton. There is a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Behringer, seconded then, I believe. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition say no, and there is none. So ordered. Now, we'll go to the consent agenda with the item that the town manager has noted that would come off of that because that matter has already been paid for, so we probably take that off. Will that change? Do I hear a motion that we adopt the consent agenda?
I move.
Okay, zero second.
Second.
All right, properly motioned, second. Any other comments? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, and it is so ordered. Thank you. Okay, now, we will move to that portion of the agenda where we will now conduct some public hearings. The first hearing is PDZ 1902 and PDMP 1902 Bethel. It's on page 24 of your agenda packet. I believe the town attorney will provide some information regarding the process that we will use and how this will be approached, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This matter and several others that are on the agenda tonight are matters that involve such things as conditional use zoning, conditional use permits, special use permits. That's a lot of fancy language to describe land use law, but what it all comes down to is that those matters involve things that are, to some extent, quasi-judicial in nature of meaning, somewhat like a court. Basically, what we have on the one hand is a zoning case to be heard. That's a public hearing in the normal public hearing sense where the applicant and the staff speak and the public can speak and say pretty much what they want. Then, in that same case, we sometimes phase over to what's called a conditional use permit itself, which is a site plan, or a special use permit, which is a glorified name for a site plan. And in those cases, that's where the quasi-judicial part comes in, and the persons who can testify in those issues are generally the staff and the applicants, engineers, and people with specialized training and experience to be expert witnesses. Those persons will have to be sworn to testify, and so depending on how many people there are, when we start this first one, we may have a group swearing in for everybody, or we may break it down. We just say, who all is here to testify in as public witness, I mean, as expert witnesses in site plan issues or CEP issues? How many do we have? Okay. Well, I'll ask you all to all come up and be sworn right now if you would. Ladies and gentlemen, we're doing this because the law says that that part of the case has to be based only on sworn testimony. The other thing we have to do, Mr. Mayor, is we have to ask the council whether any of them have any preconceived notions or opinions that would make it difficult for them to testify. Basically, the question is whether you can base a decision on what you hear tonight, regardless of whether you have any preconceived notions. If everyone on the council can say yes to that, we can proceed to the next question, which is whether you've had any ex parte communications. Now, ex parte communications are communications from persons representing applicants or opponents of these permits or cases outside of this hearing room. You can cure that by disclosing those communications, if you've had any such communications. The council had anything to disclose.
Any council members need to disclose? None, Mr. Attorney?
Thank you. We'll be ready to start these cases then, and what we can do is call the first one, which is PDZ 1902 and PDMP 1902 Bethel. The first presenter is Mr. Bamford.
Okay, I'm going to officially open the public hearing. Mr. Bamford will be our first presenter. Thank you for being here, Mr. Bamford.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. This is a planned residential development conditional use rezoning and a planned development conditional use master plan application. The applicant is Meritage Homes. The property is located on both Clifford Road and New Bethel Church Road. It's approximately 164.59 acres in size, and this was heard at the planning commission at their meeting on August the 19th. And a couple notes about that meeting. The planning commission did vote three to one to recommend denial of this proposal, citing that it was not compatible with the present zoning or conforming with the uses on nearby properties and out of character with the neighborhood. Since that meeting, the applicant has made some changes to the rezoning and site plan. Originally proposed were townhomes and single-family homes with a total of 721 dwelling units. The applicant has changed this to 575 dwelling units, only single families, so the townhomes have been removed off the proposed site plan. The density originally proposed was 4.38 units per acre. What is proposed now, since the last planning commission, is 3.5 units per acre. This is a vicinity map of the rezoning site. It has, it's two, it's one tract, but it's separated by New Bethel Church Road. It has frontage along Clifford Road, is directly west of South Garner High School. On the south side of New Bethel Church Road, this project site is northwest of the Glen Creek subdivision and east of Oak Park subdivision. This is a Google Street View looking east on New Bethel Church Road with the project site on both sides of the road. This is another Google Street View looking east on Clifford Road with Garner High School a little farther down on the right, and the project site is over here. The existing zoning of the site is R-20 residential. To the southwest, we have a neighborhood that's in Wake County, and this is zoned Wake County R-30. To the northwest, we have Oak Park Zone R-9 conditional use, R-20 on the northwest and east of this site, south of New Bethel Church Road. South Garner High School is zoned R-9 conditional use. There is a proposed subdivision on this site, Harper's Landing, which is zoned R-9 conditional use. And north of the site, north of Clifford Road, we have some R-40 zoning. So Hebron Church Road runs north to south. New Bethel Church Road runs west to east, and Clifford Road runs west to east here. This is a list of rezoning cases in this area of Garner, east of NC-50 around New Bethel Church Road. The oldest case we have on follows from 1987, with the most recent case was Planned Residential Development Z-19-03, which was approved recently. The existing zoning is R-20. This is a low-density, single-family district, minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet. Density is around 2.18 units per acre. The proposed zoning classification is Planned Residential Development Conditional Use District And PRD projects must be on at least 15 contiguous acres. The proposal is 575 single-family lots with a density of 3.5 units per acre. The applicant has proposed zoning conditions for this project. Permissible uses will be restricted to single-family detached and single-family subdivisions. There are conditions regarding the single-family product types. Maximum density will be limited to three and a half units per acre. Some deviations have been requested for lot sizes, and this is allowed in Article 6.12A. They are proposing 230 lots to have a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet, and they are also proposing 345 lots to have a minimum lot size of 4,255 square feet. Deviations for building setbacks are also proposed. The proposed setbacks for the detached, single-family lots are as follows: front setback 20 feet, rear 20 feet, side 5 feet, corner side 12 feet. There is a zoning condition regarding the neighborhood recreational amenity. There will be a pool with a minimum 3,000 square feet, and a clubhouse shall have a minimum 2,000 square feet under roof. A gazebo shall be constructed as part of Phase 1 on the northern parcel as a gathering space until the southern parcel is developed. All single-family homes shall have at least a two-car garage. Final siding that is used will have a minimum gauge of .045, and there are some other conditions regarding the front elevations and building materials. Moving on, garage doors for all housing types shall have carriage door hardware. Single-family homes shall be slab-on-grade with turn-down with 12-inch minimum brick on front and sides. And on the single-family homes, the masonry water table shall be wrapped from the front accent into the covered stoop area. Elevations with a cantilever front elevation accent shall have decorative brackets or shelf supports for single-family homes. The homes shall have a 12-inch minimum front eaves with a 6-inch minimum for the rakes, the side rakes. Condition number 15, a front porch or covered stoop, a minimum four feet in depth, shall be provided on all housing types. Passive recreational areas shall have 500 square feet of enhanced landscaping and benches. Trails shall be utilized to connect some open space areas together and provide enjoyment of the natural environment. And lastly, a seven-foot-tall berm, seven-foot-tall landscaped berm shall be installed along the project's frontage on New Bethel Church Road. Regarding traffic counts, NC DOT has not reported any traffic counts for the year 2017. The traffic counts from the period 2007 through 2015 did not exceed 3,700 vehicle trips per Two-lane roads are estimated to have a daily capacity of 10,000 trips. As dedicated turn lanes are added, this capacity increases to an estimated 13,000 to 18,000 daily trips. The Garner Forward Long Range Plan designates this area as medium-density residential, and under this category, single-family duplex, triplex, quadplex, or townhome-style residences are recommended between a density of two and a half to five units an acre. And under this proposal, the project would be no more than 3.5 units per acre. In addition to the future land use map, we also look at the guiding principles. We will look at the guiding principles for living spaces and also recreation. Under living spaces, the Garner Forward Plan says on page 63, Garner recognizes that its housing stock is aging and that it could be more diverse to attract younger residents and retain older ones. This zoning proposal diversifies lot sizes and provides exterior maintenance-free choice for owners. Page 63 of the Garner Forward Plan, younger and older residents, millennials and boomers respectively, share many of the same desires. In a living space, this would include proximity to shopping and services and appreciation for greenways and fun places to gather. Under this proposal, this zoning, these zoning conditions provides over 1.5 miles of private and public greenways, as well as pocket parks and a community swimming pool. Some more principles for living spaces, page 64 of the Garner Forward Plan, a higher ratio of dwelling units to linear feet of public streets is an indicator of lower revenue support for downstream road maintenance expenses, which is a recommended practice for evaluating housing proposals. In greenfield areas, favoring larger master plan tracks helps to maximize private contributions and amenities, which is also a recommended practice. This is page 64 of the Garner Forward Plan. Under this zoning conditions and project, one-half mile of private trails, one mile of paved public greenway, enhanced landscaping and six pocket parks, a community swimming pool, additional turn lanes on existing roads, and a financial contribution to offset added impacts to congestion on NC-50. By comparison, the adjacent smaller Oak Park and Harper's Landing developments have only contributed passive pocket parks and additional turn lanes on existing roads. Under recreational opportunities, the guiding principles, number one, in addition to large projects, small parklets, and small connections between neighborhoods, commercial areas and schools should be priorities to soften perspectives and communicate a human scale for pedestrians. This is page 76. Under this proposal, this would offer sidewalk connections to South Garner High School, and it also offers several small pocket parks along internal streets. Construction of one mile of greenway is a recommended practice for implementing the town's parks and recreation open space in Greenway Master Plan. This is page 77. The stated purpose of the PRD zone is to conserve and preserve natural features and green space, which is a recommended practice for promoting recreational opportunities. This is page 77. Page 78, parks play a vital role in neighborhood life, providing a place for children to play and residents to meet. This includes pocket parks, areas of a quarter acre or less. Page 78, under this proposal, there are at least six standalone pocket parks proposed. Zoning consistency. Town staff offers that the requested rezoning from single-family R-20 to Planned Residential District Conditional Use 7 is consistent with the future land use map and also with the comp plan's guiding principles and recommendations of the living spaces and recreation opportunity sections of the plan. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and after the public hearing for the rezoning, there will be a presentation on the details of the master plan.
Thank you, Mr. Bamford, for your very thorough report. I will inquire of council members who may have questions, and I'll start to my right hand here with Mr. Vance if he has any. If you need some time to think about it, you can defer and we'll come back to you.
I don't need time. I have a question in reference to the first time it was turned down with a three-to-one vote from the planning commission. What was the vote the second round?
It went to planning commission just one time. And it was a vote of three to one to recommend denial.
But the changes were made to take out the...
The changes were made between the planning commission meeting and the public hearing tonight.
Okay. So, yeah. Thanks, sir. Ms. Behringer.
I have no questions.
Okay. I'll go to Mr. Singleton.
And, yes, Mr. Bamford, and to confirm, following from Mr. Vance's questions, excuse me, they reduced 146 units from 721 to 1575, and the density went from 4.38 to 3.5.
Correct.
So substantial reduction in the units produced, and in PRD, I think it said the density can be between two and a half units and five units, is that correct? Or two units and five units?
That's the comprehensive growth plan.
Comprehensive growth plan, okay.
Two and a half to five units an acre.
These changes were all made since the planning commission meeting in August?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy.
Looking under the 17 conditions, I think they call it the generally permitted uses, and all uses are conditional, and the following conditions are proposed. I think it's our page 27 or page 27 of the agenda. Let's try one of the words, first of all, under number five, and it says, goes through all the discussion about the lot sizes being deviations in the lot sizes, and so it's proposed, I read the wording in here, and I know this is, might be a little bit aggravation, but a deviation of 230 lots or whatever is proposed, et cetera, is proposed. That word proposed, is that proposed by, were we recommending that? Was that proposed by the...
That's proposed by the applicant.
So it's requested by the applicant?
Yes, sir.
All righty. Now, clarifying this, that under our current UDO or planning guidelines, 60% of the lots are to be 12,000 or larger, and 40% of the lots, 6,000. And the deviation... And the deviation essentially leaves the 40% of the lots at 6,000, but 60% of the lots go from 12,000 to 4,255. Am I reading that correct?
That sounds right.
Okay. Looking at item number six, where it talks about setbacks and sidelines and that sort of thing, and requests for deviations there, are the conditions outlined in number six already included in number five?
No, the conditions in number five just deal with the lot sizes, and condition number six just deals with the setbacks.
One, I have the, I have the least understanding is about, what is the separation between two homes that are adjacent to each other?
Under this proposal, it'd probably be 10 feet, it'd be 5 feet on each side.
Somewhere else I read in there, then there's supposed to be a 5-foot maintenance easement is, is that between two houses like that?
I don't know that I have that information, but, yeah. Stacy will answer that question.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Any home that has a reduced setback down to 5 feet or less would have that 5-foot maintenance access easement on it, and that'll be done at the time of the plat. But yes, sir, that will be done.
I know this is for the site plan, but it's got to be answered under this one. There's a number of instances where storm drainage lines are installed along lot lines and maybe along back lot lines. But I saw where sanitary sewer easements showed easement lines, but are there designated easements for storm drainage so that they can be maintained? And who, in this type of quarters, who, I'll ask it now and I'll wait, but it's, when we're talking about lot sizes, it's like, how are we going to, how do we get in there and manage it?
There are easements for drainage.
Okay.
That is typically maintained, will be maintained by the HOA, not by the town. And, but the maintenance, the access easements on the side setbacks would allow also for that maintenance, but it allows neighbors to be able to get in and fix their property and not step over onto somebody else's property accidentally and get into any kind of issue there.
So storm drainage is an HOA responsibility?
The drainage easements are to be maintained.
Outside the street right away.
Right. Yes, sir.
Is it appropriate to ask about trails, since this was mentioned already? The public trails are, I'll start with the private trails. The private trails, I think it showed that they were gravel trails, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is the public greenway, is that gravel or is that paved?
10-foot paved section on that one.
Okay. And who maintains those trails?
The private would be the HOA, the public will be the town.
Exterior, it talked about number nine, shall have a minimum of the, it talked about vinyl. If masonry is not the predominant first floor, then whatever. When I went on and looked later at some of the, trying to figure out how much is vinyl and how much is not, if I need to wait until site plan, I'll wait, but can we talk, tell us, can you tell us anything about the amenities? Is it possible that the entire front, entire house can be vinyl?
I do not know the answer to that.
Okay. We'll come back. I'm assuming that high school students that live there will, they won't be picked up by a bus. Has there any thought been given to how buses will be handled? For elementary and middle, will they come into the subdivision? Will they pick up, I know where I live, they don't come in, they pick up, they pick up on the main road, on the state maintained road. Is there any provision, would anything prevent the buses from going in and turning around internally and using the streets there to, that's a busy travel road, is anything, I'm looking about the protection of students?
That's something that I did not look at during the zoning review for this case. That might be better answered by the applicant or at the end of the master plan presentation.
Okay. The elevation type, too. To answer your question on the elevation, it could be all vinyl, but it would have to, it couldn't just be all of the horizontal vinyl, it would have to be like shakes and horizontal or different types of siding, so that you just don't have all horizontal siding. And to answer your other question, there would not be anything to keep the buses from coming in and getting off the main road, because those will be public roads, they won't be private, so they'll be public. The buses could come in and pick up students inside the neighborhood. And the, as well as the two different types of vinyl, one of the conditions addressed the stone or brick water table that'll be on the bottom as well, so you'll have that at the bottom. Yeah, number 12 there.
Go ahead, let somebody else have another shot at it.
I think Ms. Singleton has a question.
I have a question on number five, item five. Okay, it says in the book, the information we've gotten also at the very beginning of this, it talks about 575 single-family lots, but in this, on the third line, it says 550 single-family lots. 575 and 550.
I believe it's 575.
Okay. So what's shown there is incorrect?
Yes, sir, we will fix that.
Want to make sure I hadn't missed 25 lots up or something else in here, because, I mean, it's on here, I just want to make sure I had it right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Banford.
I'll let it go for present. I'll have a couple others, we'll get when we get to the applicant and talking about amenities.
Okay, Ms. Behringer or Mr. Vance, any follow-on questions from either of you?
No further questions.
Hearing none, let's see, is Ms. Harper up next?
It'll be time for the applicant if they want to speak on the zoning and then the public.
Okay. So, all right, who from the applicant is going to speak tonight? I'm stating your name and address, sir.
Keith Roberts, 202 Bonica Creek Drive in Garner, representing the applicant and Timmons Engineering Group, where the site planners and engineers, and we have folks represented here who may be to ask other questions as you get into the weeds. And I know it's difficult sometimes to separate the zoning from the subdivision part, so I'm speaking now basically on the zoning part, not the subdivision conditions. Appreciate staff and their presentation, also appreciate all their help since August, as was mentioned, this did go to the planning board in August, so it has been quite some time getting back before the council. And the reason for that was, a lot of it was out there, Oak Park West, which we were here representing, and being a citizen of Garner and living among the neighbors here and hearing the feedback at that meeting on Oak Park West from town council, and also what we heard from folks who stood up here who opposed the Oak Park West project, you know, we went back and I had requested, just take a hard look at it and say, hey, what can we do to try to do a best fit for all? You know, it's hard to make everybody happy, but what's the best product can we present to Garner that will, you know, allow the land to be developed, meet the UDO, meet the requirements, try to satisfy some of the neighbors' concerns, and at the same time allow the landowner to move forward with selling their property? And I feel like that has been accomplished, it's taken some time, appreciate everybody's input and help in doing that. You can see it in the rezoning conditions that are proposed tonight. There are major changes that have been proposed since the plan first went to the planning board. I think, you know, it's important to remember, one thing Mr. Banford mentioned about the density, the town, basically, and the way we look at it, you know, 2.5 units per acre or less is a county subdivision, basically, you know, with having to provide on-site septic and water. Once you get over 2.5, we get into the more municipal setting. Obviously, this is a municipal setting, we're in Garner's ETJ, we're in an area where if the site is developed, utilities have to be extended. This number of 3.5 puts us in that range of that requirement, puts us in that range of the Garner Forward and UDO plan, and in all factors considered, and removing the townhomes, that's one thing that drove some of the lot sizes down. They had to be driven down in order to get the density up, to get into the range where you can extend utilities and be Garner Forward. So it all kind of worked together with the rezoning conditions. Mr. Kennedy had asked about easements. One thing to remember on this plan, and it is proposing 575 lots, now, in the end, when it's all said and done, whether there's 575 or not, that may or may not be the case, I think we look at that as a maximum number, remembering that, you know, this is a master site plan, and the way I look at it is not really 575 lots, but a combination of a lot of smaller projects that will be developed over time, not 575 lots that will go on the ground tomorrow. When that master plan is submitted back to the town, and we have to do construction drawings, at that point, we'll look at, you know, water lines, sewer lines, drainage lines, and where easements need to go. The minimum size for a drainage easement is 20 feet. So if it's required, the storm drainage has to be put in between two units, that will have, the units will have to be 20 feet apart, minimum, meet the drainage easements. Sewer easement requirements for Raleigh is now 30 feet. So if there's a sewer line outfall that happens to fall between units, that'll put those units 30 feet apart. And just as a point of reference, this project looks a lot like, when you look at the lot sizes, the separation between houses, and the density, the village of Avisboro. Village of Avisboro was around 3.5 units per acre, houses are 10 feet apart. You know, we're here for any questions and anything I can answer.
How does this compare to Oak Park West?
Oak Park West, I think the density is about the same. I can't remember the exact number, but it was in the 3.5.
I really don't reme...
Yeah, maybe 3.1 is what I'm hearing, units per acre.
Okay, Ms. Singleton, oh, excuse me, go ahead, Mr.
Go ahead, go ahead, you're ready.
No, I'm okay. Keith answered the question about the easements that Mr. Kennedy asked, clarified the 20-foot and 30-foot sewer, so.
Okay, you explained some in the beginning about, listen to the other concerns, give us a feel for, say, taking out the townhomes or condos, I'm not sure which is the right terminology, and then follow along, if you would, with probably the several more reasons for doing what you're doing, coming back with this particular proposal.
Well, you know, at the, at Oak Park West hearing, which was, we all remember, it was a very long hearing, had tremendous amount of folks who were here from the Sutton Springs neighborhood and the area, and it seemed like the overwhelming outcry heard that night, other than, you know, traffic, which we all know, traffic's always a concern, no matter where we are in Wake County, there's going to be traffic issues, and we're all aware traffic is bad, and road improvements are coming, hopefully. But other than that, you know, the townhomes seem to be a big sticking point. I think even with the council that night, I heard concern, basically, with the PRD process that allowed the townhomes to be built as part of the residential subdivision. I heard folks stand up here and mentioned the fact, you know, out in that area, was it really a fit to allow townhomes? And when all, and Oak Park West was a little bit different animal based on the size of property it was, and I felt like on that one, townhomes was really, had to be part of the equation in order to meet the PRD. In this one, after Oak Park West, I went back and reevaluated and said, you know, this project can actually meet the PRD without having townhomes. So I requested to the developers, hey, would you consider taking these off? It's been a big concern to my neighbors in Garner. I think it would help go a long ways and, you know, kind of help try to meet in the middle, and I appreciate the fact they were willing to do that. One other thing I don't think was mentioned that we added on this project was a increased street buffer on New Bethel Church Road and also on Clifford Road to, and I don't, I can't remember how far, 100, what, 100 feet? So we're leaving 100-foot buffer on New Bethel Road, and in doing that, that was sort of my idea, I went out there and drove through the, down the road there, and there's a lot of existing pine trees on New Bethel Road, and to try to keep that same feel there through that corridor, I asked, hey, can we move everything back 100 feet and save all these existing trees so that the current people who still live out there, when they drive through here, will have a similar feel? And not see houses right up on the road? And they were willing to do that as well. So I think all the changes, I wanted to stand up here tonight and be confident, everything we've done is the absolute best we could do for this piece of property and for the
On the houses being 10 feet apart, and there's something in our UDO or planning guidelines that prays the thing about minimal lot sizes so that it's easy to maintain, and that's what the new homeowners want, but when you're down to 10 feet and you got vinyl, and one of the things that seems like vinyl is notorious for is it seems just to attract mold, and when sunlight can't get to it, vinyl homes, and when the mold shows up, you see it from a distance and it just winds up being ugly, and this idea of maintenance-free, far from it, what do you, when you're thinking about materials, do those things cross your mind?
I will have to let the developer builder address that, I'm afraid that's outside my area of expertise.
Mine, too.
I hear what you're saying.
I just don't like washing a house.
I'm not sure I can address that question adequately, anyway.
You think about, also, that somebody's first, somebody's fifth, somebody's last in line with all of these, and won't be the last one, but this is biggie. And from a, and not from a selling standpoint, but from what Garner looks like and what we're going to leave behind, have we got enough of these, we got enough of these developments like this? Is there, isn't there room for some diversity? Diversity is a big word. I just read something in, something I get from, I don't know, some publication that bombards us every day, that towns now, you're behind if you don't have a diversity officer. Well... Well, that's for personnel. This one is diversity in housing. They all, it's, we've got a whole lot of look-alikes. But I reckon houses look alike anyhow.
They, most-
Do we think about that? You said, that's not written in the ordinance.
Right.
But do you, do you think about what, what you leave behind and what it looks like?
You know, me, and this is personal because of living in Garner and, and, you know, I'm wanting, wanting to do the best for Garner and wanting Garner's price points to get higher. You know, we know the average home price in Garner right now is around $160,000. We want to get that up. In order to get that up, you know, what we're missing is that next level of, of home. That next level is, is frankly, in that $300,000 give or take range. We do not have enough of that. Frank, we, we need a lot, lot more of that. You know, Oak Park is helping fill that gap. They're approaching, some are going over $400,000 at Oak Park. And I can let the developer builder speak to this a little bit more about this product, but I, I'm under the assumption this one is going to be somewhere in the 275 to 400 range. So there will be a variety of products that will go from 275 to 400. And all of that will help build that diversity in Garner, to build up that price point that we need before we can jump to, you know, to $500,000 to $600,000 range. So I think we're, we're on the right path with what we're doing. And we're fortunate that we have finally developers now looking at Garner and are willing to come here and put 300, you know, to $400,000 units on the ground. I mean, it's only going to help us all in the, in the future. Definitely going to help our current retailers, our folks that we're working with who are looking at doing more and investing more in retail in Garner, are certainly looking at these decisions, counting rooftops to decide, hey, do we want to come, come to Garner? So, you know, I think this is a big deal for Garner. It's a big deal for the schools, you know, building a subdivision of this density that's close to the high school is a big deal. I think it's, you know, it invites it. It says, hey, school is here. We, we need this type of development. In doing that, we take traffic off the roads. We take parents and kids who are having to commute White Oak and Highway 50 to come in. We get them closer to the high school. So we're helping traffic. You know, a, a lot of folks too, I think when you, when you look at plans like this and you see 575 lots, you also have to realize 575 lots are not going to be on the ground tomorrow. These things take a lot of time to get through. As an example, Oak Park West, that project started, not Oak Park West, Oak Park started in the summer of 2016. So three and a half years down the road from when Oak Park started, they just sold their 50th home. So if this is on pace with that, by the time this subdivision sells its 50th home, the Southern Loop of 540 will be finished. So I, I think that's important to remember, you know, you know, these PRDs, we're not approving someone to go in there and do 575 tomorrow. It's meant as a planned residential development that we're planning out an area to be a residential development. But these are phased projects, which is just a lot of smaller projects that have to go back through planning and back through engineering to get approved. So it's basically trying to master planning the area that will work well together.
What's in this package? Our package, Mr. Roberts, is, when you talk about phasing was, at least what's shown here is what's projected. As I know, that can also change, but it's showing at least five, it's showing five phases right now. So that's what they talked about. So you're talking-
Correct.
Okay.
Is that a build out of maybe up to 10 years?
I would say by the time we go through the process of getting site plan approval, construction drawings, and permitting, and building, it could be, easily it could be 10 years. I mean, I would fully expect improvements on Highway 50, Ackerman Road, White Oak Road, Southern Loop to be completed, all that, to every, everything we've talked about in here at other meetings as far as future roadwork to be completed before this project would be built out, you know. And this project is also, you know, bringing other things to the table, such as a regional pump station, which, you know, Garner looked at years ago, putting exactly in this location, that there was even some talk at the time about Garner funding the, the project, but it was such an expensive project, it, it dropped. But it solves that problem that as a town, we looked at maybe 10 years ago, we're trying to get a pump station, regional pump station in this area. It will also connect the waterline. This project ties into Oak Park, and it'll connect the waterline at Oak Park through this project across New Bethel to the north to Clifford and create a loop system that Raleigh is very high on, that will maintain service and pressure in the future. So, you know, everything about this project, from supporting the schools to the utility extensions, to, you know, what it, what it's doing for the area, you know, for, for retail, is very, very positive, in my opinion.
Your latter points there on pumping station and, and waterline connections are, are very, very valid. I, I was surprised when I was looking at the drawings that we were eliminating a pump station that was built three years ago. And, and they're close to each other.
They are.
I mean, within a thou, perhaps within 1,000 feet, well, 12, 1500.
They are, they are. And again, it goes back to my point earlier, that this location in this basin is exactly where, if, if you recall, and it was probably in 10 years ago or more, that we were looking as a town at trying to get a regional pump station in that area because we were so concerned about that, the area developing as county subdivisions. And because we were not able to move 10 years ago, the subdivision there to the east happened because they could not get utilities. So, you know, that's a valid point.
Well, for the record, we offered to do it for them. They had to move quickly. A year and a half later, they started, and we would have had the utilities in the ground. So I'm sorry we missed that opportunity, but, and they are homes that are selling for more than 400 grand. So I wish we could have convinced the developer at that time to let us invest in the future, but it didn't work. So.
Again, I think, like you say, it is important to capture what we can. We do not capture it. We know Fuqua Varina's coming up from our south. They've extended their E T J. They're building south of 1010. You know, folks are going to live here, or they're going to live there. Either way, they're going to be driving through Garner. So I, I think, you know, the more we can capture it, the better. Well, we are from a, frankly, a tax base, you know, they're, they're going to drive on our roads. They should pay us something.
Way's got a significant E T J expansion request in the county's hands right now.
Exactly.
Going through the process, perhaps already a done deal.
Mr. Roberts, I have a question. Earlier, I think Mr. Banford indicated the latest information they had was 2017 as relates to what traffic counts, what traffic flows. I guess I should ask Mr. Vance, maybe that's not unusual that we don't have anything more recent than that. Of course, you can say, well, that's two years ago. But people who live out there, I'm sure, would suggest that, that there, that traffic is there and it's increasing all the time. May not all be generated out there, obviously, coming from Johnson County. But you have any concerns about the information contained here in terms of the, the vehicle count?
Well, you know, we, we were required to do a T I A, you know, for this project. And the T I A is based on a certain level of growth.
What is the T I A?
Traffic impact analysis, to, to look at road improvements for this site. And, you know, the T I As, you know, they basically do assume, you know, build out almost, almost immediately. And in that, there were some improvements recommended, as will be mentioned as part of the subdivision part coming up, as soon as we may get into that as part of the subdivision part of. And I do know with this project, and I think Mr. Trevenberg may mention too, this project is also, has, I don't know whether volunteer or the word is right, because it's kind of a new process, pay, and I'm not sure even a fee and lieu is the right phrase. But now, as with Oak Park, Oak Park was willing to pay into the fee to get, do road improvements on Highway 50. It was an estimate, engineer's estimate that was done to, to basically widen Highway 50 from New Bethel back towards Timber. As part of the process of this, this project would pay the other half of the Highway 50 improvements. So again, another huge benefit that this project would bring. And in fact, the traffic on this is predicted not all to go out New Bethel as Oak Park West was, but to be split evenly with White Oak Road and New Bethel.
Speaking of traffic, by the way, I had the privilege of attending the, I guess the groundbreaking for the, what do we call it, the Southern Loop?
Correct.
And you alluded to that in terms of that being completed by a certain date. I think they gave us a year, 2023, that that should be completed, a crossover to I-40, I think.
That's, that's exactly, that's my understanding. And, and also the T I A that we had to complete, you know, it assumes that 540 never gets built. You know, we have, we have to assume worst case, worst case. It assumes 540 never gets built. It also assumed 165 townhomes would be built on this site, which are no longer part of the plan. So in, in that arena, I would say we're, we're conservative.
Okay. Thank you. I want us to take all the time we need, but we're, we're taking a while on this. So any, any other comments, questions for Mr. Roberts? Anybody?
No, right now.
None? Okay. Who's up next? Some other folks from the applicant?
Anyone from the public, most. An applicant first and then the public.
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Mike Owens. I live at 131 East Davie Street in Raleigh. First of all, I want to appreciate everyone for their time, council members, town officials, mayor pro tem, and also all those that are attending. Appreciate your participation in the public process. Again, my name is Mike Owens. I'm the vice president of land acquisitions for Meritage Homes. So I'm here representing Meritage, who is the applicant and would also be the builder and developer here. So first of all, I want to start out, you know, there's always a lot of questions about who is this, the builder? And there's some of that earlier. So I want to speak a little bit to who the company is. So one thing that we speak about a lot is the company truly is a ground-up business. Our C E O has been at the helm for 34 years. The company was actually started in 1985, and has been at the helm since. So company values have been aligned since. Truly is a ground-up American business, which we're very proud of. And in terms of differentiating, home builders sometimes have a hard time differentiating themselves, how they brand themselves and so on. Frankly, it's sometimes hard for some to brand themselves. What we really focus on and what we're known for is we really are the, the gold standard, frankly, in green building. There's an award from Energy Star that we have won six years continuously for Energy Star Partner of the Year on a national level. That's basically, we are the gold star. We are the, kind of the high bar for green building as a home builder. Our homes includes, excuse me, include spray foam insulation, thermal brakes, and a number of things that frankly add cost to our homes that ultimately save our consumers' costs and ultimately are better for the environment. So that's something that, in terms of how we really position ourselves, who are we as a builder versus some of our peers? That's in our logos, that's in our materials, and we practice what we preach. Every home we build, whether it's a $700,000 home or in the twos, we uphold that standard. It's something that we're very proud of as a company and we really believe in. And it's also frankly, when you talk to our partners, developers, our, our builders out on sites, they understand the importance of that to us. And it's just something that's aligned throughout our culture. Regarding the proposed site, as mentioned before, we've been working on this for over a year. From a planning perspective, you know, what really drew us to this, you know, as mentioned in, in prior cases, the schools have been a great catalyst for growth in the area. Not only having new schools, but frankly, from a planning perspective, I know there's been mentions before of, of, you know, five, six years ago, looking at where Garner wants growth to go. The school's been a great catalyst for not only the quality of those schools, but also frankly, putting them in a position that made sense from an infrastructure perspective. There's, there's open land, there's, there's public roads, there's a lot of infrastructure in place to essentially say, hey, this is a place that makes sense for that growth. So that's something that's really drawn us to Garner and specifically to this area. From a planning principles perspective, traffic often in these meetings is one of the biggest concerns and one of the biggest questions. And, you know, if you, you know, if you spoke to some of the folks in planning, I'm no expert in this, but I certainly know that one of the best ways to eliminate traffic is to minimize the distance between point A and point B. Point A is almost always where we live. Point B could be work, it could be retail. But school is just about as predictable of a point B as you can get. And one of the things that really drew us to this site is how close we are to the schools. It is very unique to have something that's truly walkable to the schools, and something that really drew us to this. Another thing frankly is, is scale. I, I know this is a larger community that we're proposing, and I say community specifically because this isn't a subdivision. We have enough scale here that we can do something special. We have enough scale here where we can have multiple products, where we can amenitize this, where we can put in some significant improvements to make this a great place. As was mentioned before, we've had to make some changes in the past probably three months, you know, based on a lot of the feedback in prior hearings. We took a hard look with Keith and Timmons on what we felt was appropriate, given everything that was going on, what could make this more enticing for, for everyone in the room, frankly. And townhomes was, was frequently something that came up. And as there's been more and more properties frankly proposing townhomes, to some extent, I know there's a concern over is there too much? Is this the right price points? You know, we took a hard look at that, and it wasn't an easy decision frankly. You know, we, we reduced, as was mentioned before, how many homes we're proposing significantly. We eliminated those townhomes, and not only that, we actually added, our prior plan had three segments, one of which was townhomes. We actually added a section which is kind of on the northern portion of the sites with lots with a little bit of extra depth for, for master downs. So essentially, you know, instead of having townhomes, lower price points, we're targeting more of the 55-plus buyer with that product offering. So significant density reduction, changing out one product that had a little bit more heartburn over for something that we think, you know, generally from a tax base perspective, is something that's certainly more ideal. Next, I guess one thing I wanted to focus on a lot is truly, from a home builder perspective, once you get to a certain size, you, you transform from a subdivision to a community. And we typically do larger sites because it gives us the opportunity to do something more thoughtful, more special. Oftentimes around 150 lots, you start thinking, do we want an amenity? Trails, it becomes a more thoughtful exercise. This is a very, very rare opportunity to have a lot of great things to build a community in the same place. We have the ability to have the acreage, to put in a large amenity, to put in between the greenway, the actual trails, paved walkways. I think collectively, we're a little over two miles in walkways amongst those three things. In addition to that, based on, based on the P R D and what we're posing here, we have three products. If it was 50 lots, we'd be hard pressed to do three different products. So you look at a subdivision where you're building, you know, potentially 60 homes, it's hard to offer that architectural diversity. It's hard to offer that amenity, the trails, and the thoughtfulness that truly make up a community. And if I'm thinking about a community, what better place to do it than right beside a school? So there's a lot of things that I think really make this place an opportunity to have a very thoughtful development, but more specifically a community. And then just to, to kind of wrap it up, you know, just again, I, I really do think we've tried to be thoughtful. I mean, we, we paused and changed directions for several months to think about what is a more thoughtful proposal for everyone here. We eliminated some products. We brought something that we think makes more sense. We reduced the density and really tried to address those with a more thoughtful proposal. Again, I really do think Meritage, it's a company that I'm proud to work for. We do have more of a purpose than a lot of our peers, and that is in everything that we do. That is something that we stand by. And then in addition to that, frankly, you know, we're, we're a larger company. We have the capital and the horsepower. Not many builders can perform on something like this. You talk about the deal duration, you know, to Keith's points, these homes aren't going to be done tomorrow. This is going to, we're going to be out here for a while. For a larger site, I think it's important to know that this is somebody that we trust, that we feel good about, and has the wherewithal to be there throughout the projects. And we have the horsepower, the resources, the capital, and so on, to perform and build a great community here. And then to wrap up again, I, I really do think this is a very rare opportunity to build a true community. This is not a neighborhood, this is not a subdivision, this is a community. With where we are, we have the ability to limit traffic impact because we are so close to the school. We have the ability to actually say we are walkable to the school, which is very hard to do. It's, it's kind of, feels old timey, but that's something that's very desirable, and it's really hard for people in our position to provide. This meets a lot of needs in terms of what we're looking for and what is idealistic in a residential community. We also have the ability to add significant open space. What we're providing in our plan is actually, I believe it's about 10 acres above what is required. Because again, this isn't, this isn't a subdivision to me. This is a community, and we think that's important. We're also incorporating amenities and, like I said, trails that really provide the framework for walkability and community within this. You know, with that, again, I just want to say I really do appreciate everyone's time. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on behalf of Meritage.
Thanks, sir. I'll start to my right again, Mr. Vance.
Yes, Mr.
Okay.
Okay, I do. You, you made a good-
You made a good point about when you're only building 50, 60 homes, it's hard to offer three different, three different basic products.
Yes, sir.
But now we've got 10 times that amount and we've got three basic products. I'm sure you've thought about, you know, more, heck of a lot more than, than I would know about the building, but when I look at the, look at some of the renderings that I see in the, in the package that was prepared by Timmons.
Yes, sir.
I can see the same basic footprint, but I suspect that the exterior looks a little bit, so a little bit different. That being said, when I think of three different products, I think of only three different views from the street. How many different views from the street would be, in the, do you have available to you as you have different floor plans?
Yes, sir. Good question. So there's three different quote products that you'll see on the site plan designate as different lot sizes. Within that typically for us, on average, those products will have four distinct floor plans, plus or minus, and then within that, there's multiple elevations to go with that. Depends on the plan, you know, perhaps four plus or minus, different elevations per plan, depending on which product series, but ultimately, you know, you extrapolate that product series with how many floor plans, the number of elevations, you have, I mean, you know, dozens of distinct different looks.
So can you answer the question on the use of vinyl? Have you got a product that, would you be building products that look different or have some different product? Because when I read under Section 3 of the package that was presented under Figures 4, 5, and 6, the very first thing that it says is, and there's some, I would love to see, I'm not sure, I can't, I don't know that I remember what people said about the village, Ava's Borough Village. Of course, they're all brick homes. I tend to ignore some of the, the safety issues of buildings being that close when they're brick because they're, they wind up being firewalls themselves. When you get 10 feet apart on vinyl, we don't have many fires, obviously, but when you got one like that and they're 10 feet apart and vinyl loves to go up and smoke, that worries me. But when I, when I look on Figures 4, 5, and 6, I get excited, and then I read the details and the first detail is, not all elevations are representative of all required architectural details. And it's like, that's a sentence that says, oops, we reserved the right to put something else on there. And we stalled a subdivision, planned one time to say, well, if, if this is not what you're going to build, can you come back next week and show us what you are going to build? How concerned should we be about what, about that sentence that says these, these elevations don't represent actually what we're going to build?
Right, right. So I guess first of all, you know, again, within this product series, we have a lot of elevations. I think generally it's more just from a, from a company marketing perspective, we have elevations that we include in marketing materials for those plans. There are a number of elevations, there's, you know, there is, there's more backup certainly behind that. That's honestly, that's more just, you know, as a company, that's the way we typically from a marketing perspective approach things for meetings such as this. There's certainly more elevations, you know, behind those. It's also frankly, you know, when they're done from a company perspective for elevations, it's assuming certain things. There may be things, you know, in our zoning conditions that were not part of, you know, the, you know, the company marketing material, so that's why it's spelled out in the zoning conditions. And to your question about vinyl, you know, a couple of things on that. So one, I know vinyl, you know, last 10 years, there's times where it's gotten some opposition, and one of the things you mentioned is, you know, I guess fire potential concerns. That is something that, you know, I would say occurred, there were low E windows that people started installing into homes that frankly, the technology, they hadn't realized that might be an after effect of it. Once that rose up as a concern in the past, when builders build new homes, the way they tint their windows essentially mitigates that effect. So it's really something from a go-forward perspective, we don't have a concern about. And I guess the second thing is from a maintenance perspective, vinyl is often, you know, looked, compared to hardy board is often what it's compared to. From a maintenance perspective, vinyl is much easier to wash, it's easier to paint, it's a lot easier to maintain, and ultimately, you know, we see it as very comparable, if not easier, just because of the maintenance, the maintenance ease. We really think vinyl is frankly much more promising.
Well, I've only, and probably in the last 10 or 12 subdivisions that have been approved, I've only voted against one of them. And, and that was integrity of the neighborhood just was, this was, this was put in an apple tree in the middle of the orange orchard. And, and when you leave, what I'm, all of these questions are looking for a product that's left behind that will, as the economy rises, the value of those homes will rise with it, as opposed to leaving a home behind that it's there and it has nowhere to go but down. And that's, that's my concern, that's just my personal opinion about all vinyl and the entire subdivision being nothing but vinyl.
Yes, sir.
That, that worries me. I could have, why is it at this late hour? Am I concerned about it? I am, but that's the reason I'm asking the questions about, give me some hope that this is just not a cookie cutter subdivision.
Yes, no, absolutely. And to my point before, I mean, again, there are multiple other elevations behind those, that's just again, for, you know, for the messaging purposes, keeping it just more straightforward. The other thing I will say, just again, to our, our construction practices as a company, the way that we, the way we spray foam insulation, the way we seal our homes, you mentioned before, concerns over mold, we do a number of things like that to essentially improve the long-term, the longevity of our homes. Construction quality is incredibly important to our company, and if we had concerns over the durability of it, the lasting value, it's not something that we would build.
Last thing, the, your, your subdivision split by New Bethel, we don't have any problems with driveway, driveway interference with, with the, with the high school, I'm assuming. You've got a driveway that's, runs the length of the property on the high school on the very, very far western edge, and I don't think you, apparently you don't have anything, is your driveway more to the western side of the, of your property because, or is it to the eastern side?
Do we, do we have a visual? That would be helpful. If I could just see what you're pointing to.
I could, I could run up my own screen here, I should have looked at that.
Just want to make sure I'm looking at the same thing.
Nobody has a visual.
After we have someone come up and put the subdivision.
I don't think what we have is going to show the high school, but.
It's on the western side. I, I, you've got.
Just in our package, just.
Yep.
Show it.
I'm fine with that. I've satisfied myself. There's one entrance that's pretty close, you've got two entrances into the subdivision, and one of them is in front of the single-family residential unit that's right next to the high school, and then the other one on the western side of your property connects across New Bethel. And so I'm, that's where the primary traffic is going to come.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you for, that's, that's all the questions I've got.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy, I believe Ms. Behringer maybe had a follow-up question.
Yes.
Maybe a question for Mr. Hodges. Has the, are we in the stage in this process where the fire department has done their pre-plans for this subdivision as far as services?
I'm sorry.
Has the fire department done their pre-plans for this service subdivision as far as services? They would be able to answer the question about the vinyl that Mr. Kennedy might be...
So I believe that there'll be a statement when the, in the, the section on the subdivision review in a moment about the fire, but I think the short answer is they have reviewed the plans.
Yes, they have.
Thank you.
I'm supposing we're pretty much finished with Mr. Owens, is that right? About to declare that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay. Mr. Attorney, I guess it's time to hear from the public at this point in time, and I believe that there were several names listed on a list over there, so if those persons, um...
This is on the zoning?
Yeah, this is on the zoning only at this point, okay. They've all been sworn, I believe, if you've been sworn. Recognize any person that wants to go first at this point unless, I don't see...
Somebody doesn't have to be sworn.
Okay. All right. Members of the public, Mr. Lee.
I'm part of the public, but I don't guess I have a whole lot to say. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm Alex Lee. I live at 8345 Hebron Church Road, just around the corner. Of course, always my concern is traffic. We beat that horse to death now, and it seems that the town's not concerned about traffic, so we'll let that go. And I noticed it come down from 721 to 575. I was surprised at that. Developers aren't usually that good-hearted. They don't give up that much money. But anyway, that's so, so it is. I just would like to say too, that I believe the town needs to allow advertising on WTOG because I've never had so many people to say, I saw you on television, as I was up here twice. And I was also surprised that when I talked about going down Highway 50, about two weeks later, they put up stoplights down there, but they still have the burlap on them. Would you please ask them to hurry up that project too?
Sure.
That's all I have to say.
Just comment, Mr. Lee.
These people will have my blessings.
Yes.
I'll die before it's finished.
We hope not. We hope not, sincerely, Alex.
I think some people might think, Mr. Lee, they see you on TV when you're wearing a white outfit and advertising chicken.
That's right.
Good. Okay, thank you, Mr. Lee. Members of the public, yes, sir, please.
Good evening. My name is Michael Collins. I live at 270 Opecan Harvest Drive. Mr. Kenny, I want to make sure that you understood the lot size thing. I think there was a little bit of discussion around that. Can we bring up slide number, I think it was 11? Or it was number five on the list of requests. Right, so when we look at this, the, the request is to have 60% at least 12,000 square feet and 40% at 9,000 square feet. To be clear, what they are asking for is to have 40% at 6,000 square feet, which is below the, below the minimum, and another 50% at 4,200 square feet, which is almost a third of the original 12,000 square feet.
I had a clear understanding, that's exactly what I said.
Okay, I wanted to make sure, because I didn't hear it that way, I just wanted to make sure. I'm concerned with these lots being so close together and fitting the character of Garner. We look back, you guys referenced the Garner Forward Plan, on page 57, it specifically states Garner does not want to be Raleigh. This feels a lot like Raleigh. I appreciate all the effort and the work that the developer has done in hearing our proposals. There's a lot of good stuff that has happened here, but I don't think we're quite there yet. We should look at maintaining that 12,000 square foot lot number with some deviations to 9,000 square feet, I'm okay with that. But again, this doesn't feel like Garner, this feels more like Raleigh or Apex or Cary in those areas. So those are my big concerns with the, with the zoning. As far as the traffic goes, I would remind Town Council that the NCDOT is having issues right now. They are $600 million over budget this year, and they have also been stealing, or I shouldn't say stealing, illegally transferring money out of the Highway Trust Fund of North Carolina. So those particular things are risk factors when we look at road improvements. Could they mean anything? Possibly no. Could they delay these projects? Yes. If the DOT says, hey, we're going to do this by 2025, 2030, I've heard some far-out estimates on road improvements, these are things that could risk and push these projects out a lot further. So I just wanted to make sure council was aware that these things are going on in the state. They're a pretty big deal. Let's see, I took a lot of notes. I think that's about all that I have for the actual zoning part of it. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, just a point of clarification, when he offers up information of that type, this council doesn't have to consider his information by the NCDOT and what they've done as expert testimony, that's his opinion.
It's not expert testimony, it's citizen testimony, he can say pretty much what he wants to say.
Okay.
Sure, and that, and totally understood, I'm not an expert in state law, I am not an attorney. This information, however, does come from the State Treasurer, so there's some...
I'll strike my question, yeah, sure. Okay. Anybody else from the public care to speak? Now would be the time to do that. Okay. I believe we're ready to close the hearing.
You move on to the...
Excuse me, that's right, we're going to do the, yeah, I thought we were going to vote on this first, yeah, okay. Now we'll go to the cycling. Thank you, Ms. Harper, for waiting.
I am here to talk about the subdivision plan conformity with our adopted plans and policies. Again, this is a little over 164 acres with 575 single-family homes. Those are your minimum lot sizes, broken down by the product type, is detailed in the PRD document. So Product A at 4255 for the lot size, Product B and C both at 6,000 for this product size, and Product C is your master down product. There is a 25-foot perimeter setback around all PRD developments, this one included, and the setback table is shown there for all product types, that's the same. It's 20 foot in the front, 20 feet in the rear, five feet on the side, which we've talked about, and 12 feet on the corner side. They do meet their landscaping, tree coverage requirements with both preserved and new plant material and their, sorry, the perimeter buffer, there is no perimeter buffer on this because the townhomes have been eliminated. Their street buffer is not required in this case, however, they have provided a 25-foot enhanced street buffer being offered along both New Bethel Church Road and Clifford Road. And internally, the street trees will be provided every 40 feet on average on the internal roads there. The open space, the requirement is 25%. In the PRD booklet, it does show them with a commitment to meet that 25%, of course. The plan sets do show it in the 30% range, I believe. However, that commitment is taken from the PRD booklet. Again, they will have amenities that we've talked about a little bit. One is a 3,000-foot square, 3,000-square-foot pool with a 2,000-square-foot clubhouse, and those will be underway prior to the final plat for Phase 4. And a gazebo will be constructed as part of Phase 1, which is across New Bethel. The site does also have a pedestrian circulation system of both sidewalks and trails, and there is a Town of Garner Greenway that traverses the subdivision with pedestrian crossing at New Bethel Church Road. To answer your question, Ms. Behringer, the inspections Department with the Fire Department has reviewed and approved this. They are part of our technical review committee process, so they look at it at that point. They did not express any concern to us over that at the time. With the environmental issues, the southwestern portion of the site is within a FEMA flood plane. The site is also impacted by a few riparian buffers throughout the site, and these are also shown on your master plan, which you have. For stormwater, the site is subject to quality regulations for nitrogen as well as quantity regulations of the one, 10, and 25-year storms in the areas that do not drain into the flood plane. in the areas that do not drain into the floodplain. The proposed stormwater devices will reduce the nitrogen loading rate below the allowable threshold of 6 pounds per acre per year for single-family. A nitrogen offset payment will be required as well. There you see, though, surrounding water and sewer infrastructure. Water will need to be extended to the site, and of course, the site will use City of Raleigh water and sewer infrastructure. With your roads and sidewalks, the site does have approximately 976 feet of frontage along New Bethel Church Road and 478 along the north side. It has about 580 feet of frontage along Clifford Road. Improvements will be made to half of Clifford Road and the full width of New Bethel Church Road. The ultimate sections for those roads is two 11-foot lanes, a 12-foot center-turn lane, two 5-foot bike lanes, sidewalk, curb, and gutter. One access point is provided off New Bethel Church Road directly opposite, um, I don't know where the sentence comes from. The sidewalk will be added to New Bethel Church Road along with the internal streets per the UDO and Fire Code requirements, and they did loop that road around on that last revision back to New Bethel, as we saw earlier. This is your traffic impact analysis recommendations and your AM and PM peak hour trips in and out. In the AM is 122 and 372 out. In the PM, it's 404 in and 237 out. The recommended improvements would be Clifford Road at New Bethel Church Road, a westbound right-turn lane, which is 100 feet of storage with a taper; Clifford Road at driveway number three, which is a westbound left-turn lane, 75 feet of storage with a taper; New Bethel Church Road at driveway one, that's, these are on your plans as well to show you those locations, a westbound left-turn lane, 50 feet of driveway storage with a taper; and New Bethel Church Road at driveway number two, it's a westbound left-turn lane, 75 feet of storage with a taper; eastbound left-turn lane, 55 feet of storage with a taper; eastbound right-turn lane, 50 feet of storage with a taper. There is your site plan that is part of the master plan booklet. I've highlighted a few things there for you, which you see Oak Park subdivision that's adjacent, and also, as we've talked about, South Garner High School. The pool, clubhouse, and mail kiosk will be up near New Bethel Church Road, which is also pointed out there. Phase 1 is the area across New Bethel near the school as well. And I did put the product key down there for you so you could kind of see how those were broken out throughout the subdivision. Product A and B, again, are both, can have masters up stairs. And your light blue product, that's Product C, would be the ones that have the master down. Each residential unit is required to have two parking spaces in the driveway and/or garage, and we will review that at each preliminary plat stage that comes in. As well as lighting, lighting is looked at at the construction drawing stage for the streets, but the parking lot lighting at the amenity will be looked at when it comes in for preliminary approval. The site plan conformity with the transportation plan. The 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan does not have any updated recommendations for New Bethel Church Road or Clifford Road. Therefore, the 2018 Garner, uh, 2010, sorry, Garner Transportation Plan is referenced. That recommends a three-lane minor thoroughfare in both cases. The 2018 plan does recommend a public greenway along Swift Creek and a second public greenway that should traverse the site in a north-south direction, roughly paralle- paralleling a major electrical transmission easement. With the proposed improvements along the frontage of New Bethel Church Road and Clifford Road and the incorporation of the public greenways, this project as proposed may be found in conformity with the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan. Taking a look at the Parks and Rec Open Space and Greenways Plan, there were no additional recommendations in the project area that were not already realized. Therefore, with the inclusion of the greenway, this project may be found in conformity with the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greenways Master Plan. After sufficient review and plan revisions, staff finds that this project as now proposed does conform to the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance so long as the following project-specific conditions are met. I think I have seven of those that are in your packet as well. But they deal with things such as fees being received and HOA documents being presented to the town, water and sewer fees, the stormwater fees being paid, the fee in lieu of parkland dedication at the time of each building permit, and then the triggers for the gazebo as part of Phase 1 and the recreation amenity site being done prior to Phase 4 recreadation as well. And then the NC DOT roadway improvement. Again, David went over this at the beginning of the presentation about the Planning Commission recommendation. At the time, that did include the townhomes. So the plan has decreased in intensity since it went to the Planning Commission. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and again, as well, the engineer designer.
About three or four slides back on, uh, some general, um, just keep on going back a little bit. Well, it was on, uh, where you mentioned there were no, in the transportation plan or the, uh, uh, development plan...
I've got the, the TIA information, the counts in there, or...
He's talking about where it said, "Therefore, the 20,000 Garner Transportation Plan is referenced because there's not any updated recommendations for New Bethel..."
Oh, right there.
Right there.
Yeah. It, it doesn't have any recommendations for New Bethel or Clifford Road. Therefore, the 2010 transportation is, plan is referenced. It are, just to confirm, do we have any, do we have any, are there any recommended changes in the works or, or on the books about doing, for the town being responsible for doing anything to New Bethel? I know it's, I think it's a state-maintained road. They're putting in the bridge, but do we... This particular subdivision has improvements out at the, uh, it, along New Bethel. I know along Sutton Springs, there's, there's, uh, there's been, there were improvements were made there, and perhaps along Glens of Bethel. But it's still, the long-range plan is still for it to remain a two-lane road.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we pointed out during the Oak Park West hearing was that, yes, it is still called to be a two-lane road, but two lanes with eventually, to make sure that there's turn lanes at every possible place, there needs to be turn lanes. So we treat it as what we call a three-lane minor thoroughfare to reflect that once you provide turn lanes, the capacity of that two-lane road can go from 10,000 vehicles per day upwards towards 18,000 vehicles per day.
Thank you. One other, it may come under site plan, but I'll ask it now. Let me look at this, this notice there a minute. Roberts mentioned something about 100-foot buffer mentioned along, uh, New Bethel on the front. Is, is that in the plans or is that in, in the book that we've got? It's, uh, there, there are 25-foot buffers on the front.
He's talking about this area right here. It's not technically a buffer, per se, what we would consider a landscape buffer, but they have set that back. The first units are set back from the road quite a bit. As far as landscaping, they're providing...
So that's open space?
Yes, sir.
Or...
Or undisturbed.
Undisturbed, or trees?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But that, that helps clarify. Then on the opposite side, it shows the green area on the opposite side of, uh, New Bethel.
Over in this, right in, oh, let me see, right here you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
That's more than 25, I'm assuming?
Yes.
100?
The, the 25 feet that, that I referenced is a planted buffer, which is what they've committed to, to doing as far as enhancing and planting, and that is not required by our code there. So they are providing a planted buffer that's not required of 25 feet wide.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any, do you have a question, Ms. Single?
They have seven conditions. On condition number five, it says priority issuance of the first building permit for a house or a townhome. Since there are any townhomes, that needs to be eliminated from there.
That's correct.
Just so I can't back and, can't come back and do it.
That's correct.
Okay, any others? Am I right, Mr. Vancsor?
Go for the questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Harper. I believe we're finished. Let's see, are we still taking, I guess, comments on this issue?
I believe we're hearing the applicant's witnesses on the site plan.
That's right. If you have any more to say. Roberts, is that you?
Keith Roberts, 202 Bonica Creek Drive, Garner, representing a developer in the, uh, in the Timmons Group. I will say, I have not been tremendously into weeds on the subdivision part, but I do have folks here, if there are questions, I cannot answer, can address. I think a lot has already been covered. No need to stand here too long and repeat myself. I think that, um, you know, the proposed design meets the guidelines with the UDO. It's in conformly Garner Forward. It keeps us as designers within those guidelines where we require to meet. You know, the positives of this project are the fact that it's, um, you know, things that have been done to make the project better. Removing the townhomes, I think, was a, was a big concern, and it's been, they have been removed, as seen in the, uh, in the site plan. The density was dramatically reduced in order to meet most all concerns. It allows Raleigh to complete the wear line loop. It will allow for the regional pump station. It helps fund additional privileges on Route 50. It helps support our schools. It will provide current and future retail, investing in Garner, what they're, when they are considering Garner. It will help raise the median home price in Garner. I know one thing to address, Mr. Kennedy. I think some of his concern on this is the product type. And, you know, from an engineering standpoint, I want everyone to recognize. I know we, we focus on Garner. We're here to focus on Garner, as we normally do. But as engineers and site planners, you know, we're doing projects like this all over Wake County and other municipalities, and what you're seeing tonight is exactly what we're doing everywhere else in Wake County, from a product type to material type, you know. I just want to emphasize that because I don't want you to think that folks are coming to our town and doing something different than is being done in, in other towns. You know, this is the product type. They don't change their product in order just to, you know, come to Garner. You know, what changes is, is the home price changes dramatically from, say, in, in the western part of this county or northern part of the county to Garner because our land prices are lower here. Land prices and development costs, which goes into the home price. But a product itself that's being put on the ground, you know, we're, we're probably, well, not probably, we are working on over 2,000, 3,000 lots right now in Wake County, and what you're seeing here is basically what the consumer is, is asking for. So I just wanted to, you know, personally stress that point. Again, here, here for any questions?
Questions? Council, here, here, Kenny?
We raised this earlier about the storm drainage. It, are we, it is, when it's off the right-of-way, um, and I know I'm sounding like I'm nitpicking, but we are addressing stormwater issues today that can't be maintained by the property owners. How, how's it going, how's it going to be managed?
It's public. Those, if, if you're connected to the public right-of-way, when those maps are recorded, they're recorded as a public drainage easement, which allows the town in the future, if, you know, if a pipe gets clogged up, gives permission for the town to go in and fix issues. If not, then the town would not, you know, if they were private, the homeowner could go in and clog the pipe, and the town cannot, cannot touch it. But anything that's connected to public and starts with public remains public.
Now, one curiosity question. There's a lot of storm drainage pipe out there. So for curiosity, what's the size of the pipe that ultimately dumps into your retention pod?
That, that has not been designed, you know, the construction drawings have not been done for this project, so I'm not sure I can, I can answer that. I, I would say, uh, typically, you know, we try to break it down into smaller basins so that we keep the storm drainage as small as possible. A lot of reasons for that, cost and coverage. Typically, in a subdivision like this, and I'm thinking about Oak Park, you know, the largest internal pipe we have in Oak Park, other than major crossing at the creek, is, I think, a 36-inch pipe. I would, I wouldn't expect anything to get larger than a 48.
Thank you.
Okay. Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Anybody else from the applicant? Okay, sitting none. No other public comments? Okay. And to close the public hearing, and this matter is before the council for consideration. First, on the zoning, I believe, is that correct, sir? And then on the site plan, depending on the motion on the... So, council, I will entertain a motion to approve the rezoning or to deny that.
Mr. Mayor, I find, I find PDZ 1902 Bethel consistent with the comprehensive, comprehensive plan and approve.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vance. We have a motion on the floor before us to approve. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, the things in the blue paragraph need to be discussed as well.
Okay. I find consistent with the comprehensive plan and approve. I move the Town Council to accept staff statements regarding zoning consistency with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, detailed in Section 5 of the staff report as our own. And, and I therefore move forward, move, move further that the Town, that the Town Council adopt the ordinance number 20194028, approving rezoning request PDZ 1902 as a reasonable and in public interest because it is likely to allow living and supporting daycare uses that are attractive to younger families with children as well as older residents looking to maintain private but smaller outdoor spaces, allow adequate buffers and suitable open spaces that help to preserve and protect adjacent housing stock, allow the development of an appropriate density of houses in the area in which it is located, allow for the conservation and preservation of natural features and green space to promote recreation opportunities.
Thank you, Mr. Vance, and my apologies. I wasn't looking at the right page there. Thanks. So, Ms. Behringer, you seconded the previous motion. Now it's, uh, in its final form, so you second that as well?
Second.
Okay. So the motion's been properly presented and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion? Ms. Clerk, you have that, okay? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposition? I don't believe there is any. Say no? Okay, motion is properly carried and approved. I believe that's all on that. Mr. Town Attorney, we're going to take a recess. We usually take a recess at about 9:00.
Do you have a permit?
Oh, excuse me. I'm jumping ahead again.
I had to get you a cheat sheet since you're going to be here in so long now.
You're right, yeah, yeah. I'll learn as I go, I hope.
Are we ready for the second? I recommend approval of PDMP 190... I recommend approval of PDMP 1902 Bethel. Find consistent with the town plans and ordinance as approved. I move that the council accept the statements regarding plan inconsistency in Sections 7 of this report as our own, and find the application meets the 10 permitted criteria in Sections 3.4D, and therefore approve PDMP 1902 Bethel with the three standard conditions and seven specific conditions to be listed on permit that will be prepared by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. Probably made, is your second to this motion? Ms. Behringer, thank you, probably seconded. All right, any discussion before we vote?
Briefly, just to make sure that at condition number five, the wording of townhome is taken out of that, so that'll be noted, since they're all now single-family homes. Also, encouraging that an applicant did come back and reduce the density and remove the townhomes and reduce the density in this project from about 4.4 to 3.5. That is, at least, addressing some of the numerous concerns I think we heard from people before and members of the council.
I've got one comment. Some of you wonder where in the world this is coming from, but I hope, this looks like this is going to pass, and we talked about the children being able to go to the local schools. I hope that the Board of Education of Wake County honors that request, and that all of these subdivisions that have been approved in the last two, three, five, seven years, that the children that live in them will be able to go to local schools. And I mean that sincerely. We have been, we've had our folks picked up, pulled out, shipped, and they do, it seems to be very selective sections that are extracted from Garner and shipped elsewhere, and new schools have been built here. I hope our children are able to enjoy the benefits of that work that's been done. Thank you.
Okay. Motion's probably, excuse me, is properly before the council at this time, so I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Um...
Point of order?
But I'm not sure. This point, Mr. Attorney?
The hearing's been closed, you can...
Could reopen it?
Is a procedural question?
Therefore, Mr. Dellinger.
My name is Damian Dellinger, 1311 Sycamore Drive, and there's a prior question for the town attorney, I'm not sure, it's just a procedural question. On the UDO and the powers and duties of the Planning Commission, it says that they will act on major subdivisions in two possible ways, to approve or refer to town council instead of denial. The Planning Commission shall advise and comment on whether a proposed zoning amendment, map, or text is consistent with the adopted comprehensive growth plan and any other applicable officially adopted plan, and shall have the following powers and duties, and under number seven, plan district review. Planning Commission shall review and make recommendations to the town council on planned districts, PUD, PRD, MXD, TND applications. And my question is, the Planning Commission voted on a proposal, it was altered, does it, does it need to go back to the Planning Commission? Okay, that was my question.
I don't think that's required at all. And thank you, Mr. Attorney. Okay. All right, make it quick, we're ready to vote, okay?
On the plan, there was a condition about a berm being constructed along the frontage. We're trying to save that 100-foot of trees, and I started thinking it's going to be hard to build a berm and save those 100 feet of trees. So, in the motion, I would, it would be good to say, the landscape is required, but a berm would not be required along New Bethel Road, because a six-foot berm would take out 30 feet of trees, and we want to preserve those. I just want to make sure that was clear.
Attorney, so we can modify the...
Have to, to have the council vote to allow a substitute motion and have Mr. Vance allow that, add that to the motion.
Okay. So, counsel, we will...
So that'd be an eighth condition?
Would it be, yeah.
First vote to, to allow Mr. Vance to amend his motion.
Okay.
We're going to allow Mr. Vance to amend his motion.
Okay, motion probably on the floor, seconded?
And amend that motion means that we put seven conditions, but eight conditions there. What were you going to say?
The number, yeah, would be eight, I think, right?
Well, do I have to mention about the, about the removal of the berm from the plan?
But you would add that to your motion, and I think Mr. Singleton has something else that you'd like...
Something else, Ms. Singleton?
No, no, just the eighth condition, just based on what Mr. Roberts said, that you would add an eighth condition, removal of the berm from the plan, the berm fronting New Bethel Truck Road, because they're going to leave 100-foot undisturbed area, and the berm would not allow that to happen.
Do you care to, do we need to hear anything from staff on that change?
Um, staff, Mr. Trezenberg, do we need to hear from your department at all? No? Okay, you're fine with that, okay. So we're going to vote on allowing this motion to go back to be amended, is that right, Mr. ...
Got a little bit confused. I think the first thing would be to have a motion and a second to allow the amendment of the primary motion.
Okay. So, Mr. Vance, we're probably back in your court, I guess.
Back in my court? Read the same thing again. Add in the removal of the berm from New Bethel Church, New Bethel Plan, removal of the berm from the plan, allowing a natural tree. Is the tree, is it buffer?
Removal of the berm from the frontage of New Bethel Truck Road to allow the 100-foot undisturbed tree area.
Got you, okay.
Undisturbed.
Give him a second.
Yes, I'm sorry. That is the amendment to the original motion. Ms. Behringer, you do care to second that? Okay. So, we are voting on the full motion with the addition, is that correct, Mr. Attorney? We don't have to vote on the amendment and then go back to the full motion, am I right on that?
You've already allowed him to amend it, and it's been seconded, so...
Okay, all right. Ms. Clerk, do we, do we need to give you any more information?
Need to have a motion and a second, and vote on the motion as amended.
Okay. Isn't that what Mr. Vance just provided?
He amended his motion, but the council needs to vote to approve it.
Okay.
With a motion and a second and a vote.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve...
I knew that we allowed the approval of the eighth condition that was added on by Mr. Vance.
Okay, a second to that.
Second.
Second, probably seconded, okay. Assume no other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No? And there is none? Are we finished now? Okay.
Now you got to the full motion.
We can put on the whole permit.
We got to the permit now.
So he's made that motion already.
I thought he had, yeah, okay. And let's see, was that properly seconded?
Yes, Ms. Behringer said it.
Okay, all right.
We're seconded and amended.
So, we will call for a vote then on the motion that's on the floor. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. So it is so ordered, and we are now finished with that. Thank you all for your indulgence. We may have to hire a parliamentarian until I get up on the rules. I'm trying to understand those as we go along. Okay, I'm going to suggest that we take a 10-minute recess, and we'll be back at 10 after 9 to complete the rest of our agenda.
Back to order. We will go back to our agenda. I think we're at item two under public hearings, and that would be Ms. Harper again.
It is.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Before you, we have CUP SP 1920 Briar Haven Properties. The applicant in this case is Briar Haven Properties in Magdeesod. Location is 100 Brick Steel Lane. This parcel is just under three acres, and this was heard at the Planning Commission in October, on October 21st. The predominant land you see in this area is light industrial. This parcel is a part of White Oak Business Park, which contains mostly office and warehouse uses. The Garner Forward Plan does designate this park as light industrial. A neighborhood meeting for this was not required. A public hearing occurred with the approval of the initial concept plan that accompanied the rezoning of this area to mixed-use development, or MXD-1, as we refer to it. This is just a one lot at this time, and as we go through this, you'll see this is just a grading plan at this time. There's no building proposed. Currently, it is part of a conditional use district because it is an MXD obsolete district, so that is why this plan is before you tonight when there is no building associated with it. You see the setbacks there for this zoning district. Again, this is the site plan. There is some wetlands in the middle. Mr. Sod's intention is to grade the site and get it ready for sale, to take some of the unknowns away as part of the development procedure to sell this piece of land. We did ask them to put up tree protection fencing that you see there. That assumes the buffers that would likely be required in this area, a street front buffer on both Brick Steel and Rayner, and a seven-and-a-half-foot buffer to the adjacent property along Brick Steel Lane. None of the property on the, it's actually on the southern portion of the site, but to the right on your screen, is, there's no work being done in that area, so that's why you see the TPF moved up. All of the grading and fill work will be done within the confines of that tree protection fencing. Again, no open space because this is a commercial development. And with the landscaping, again, we don't have any tree coverage requirements or landscaping plan required at this time since there's no use proposed. And again, the assumption of the street buffer is a seven-and-a-half-foot perimeter next to the light industrial use, and the 15-feet street buffer along both Rayner and Brick Steel. Again, no lighting is proposed at this time. We will evaluate that when a development plan is submitted, and it will come back to the boards at that time. Fire protection, again, is another thing that will be reviewed when the development plan is presented, as well as parking. You see that there is some flood plain on the southern portion of the site, like I spoke of, and wetlands in the middle of the site, as you saw on the site plan. Stormwater requirements will be determined at the time a development plan is submitted for review. However, White Oak Business Park is not located within the watershed protection area. A downstream hydrology study was performed at the business park with a prior rezoning, and that demonstrated that any detention on-site would increase flows to nearby White Oak Creek. Therefore, detention has not been required in the area of this White Oak Business Park. The site will eventually be served by City of Raleigh Water and Sewer Infrastructures, and we'll look at those connections and the extensions at the time the development is proposed. The, again, the sidewalks and roads is another thing that'll be looked at at that time. The 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan has no additional plan recommendations for Rayner Road or for Brick Steel Lane. Therefore, this product, project, as now proposed, may be considered consistent with the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan. The Parks Recreation Open Space and Greenways Master Plan revealed no plan recommendations in this area. Therefore, this project, as proposed, may be considered consistent with that plan. And after sufficient review and plan revision, staff does find that this project, as now proposed, conforms to the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance. The Planning Commission did review this request at their October 21st meeting. There was a four-to-one vote to confirm staff's findings that CUP SP 1920 Briar Haven is in conformity with adopted town plans and policies. And the suggested motion starts on page 59 of your packet. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. Mr. Roberts is also here. He is the engineer for the project.
Thank you, Ms. Harper, very much. Okay, any questions recording this presentation in the manner that's before us down here?
I have a question. Why, there was one vote on the Planning Commission in opposition. What was the reason for that vote?
He was concerned about the fill in the wetland area. It was an environmental concern for him.
Mr. Sangler, Mr. Kennedy.
Yes, sir. Mr. Roberts, would you, for the benefit of the public, that would be, that would, that some, I'm sure, would question or ask, hmm, what about that wetland? Just tell us what was going on there and how we can, how that's being managed.
Sure. Keith Roberts, 202 Bonica Creek Drive in Garner. Yes, the site that's before you now is part of White Oak Business Park, and it's one of just a few lots remaining out there on the, I guess, the east side there of Rayner Road. It's the desire of Mr. Sod, the current owner, to sell that lot. He's been trying to sell it for some time, and we have worked with potential buyers, but the potential buyers get scared off based on the wetlands, based on the unknowns of what it's going to take to fill in those wetlands. Those wetlands would have to be mitigated, which basically means a fee would have to be paid to the Corps of Engineers, and this fee is a fee that can change daily depending on what mitigation banks are available. So it's a lot of unknowns. The, at the Planning Board meeting, the one gentleman who opposed, it wasn't as much of environmental concern as it was, he did not quite understand, procedure-wise, how did it work to fill in a wetland, and he had concerns about building a future building on top of a, what is now an existing wetland, and the settlement issues that could be caused, or structural issues that could be caused by doing so. And during that process, I went through the process, I've explained to him the procedure there would be to get it permitted through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers or Deaner, and at, once it is permitted, to basically muck it all out, get, take the wetlands completely, I'd get down to a firm bearing soil condition under the wetlands, and then bring it back up to future site grade with structural fill that would be placed in small incremental six-inch to 12-inch lifts and tested structurally coming up to make sure it could support building foundations.
So there's a proper procedure to do that. That's being followed, and it's required to have either Deaner or Corps of Engineers 401 or 404 permitting?
Correct. We would also have to have a grading permit from Wake County, and Wake County would not release that grading permit until the other permitting agencies have been satisfied.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Any other questions for, okay, hearing none. All right. Any other body from the public? Hearing none. Mr. Sod's just walked in, I guess.
[laughing]
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. I'll entertain a motion in regards to this conditional use permit motion.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, in regards to CUP SP-19-20 Briar Haven, I move that the council accept the staff's statements regarding plan consistency in Section 5. The report is our own and find the application meets the 10 permit criteria, Section 3.1, 4.0 D, and therefore prove CUP-SP-19-20 Briar Haven. Second?
Okay, motion been made and properly seconded. Any discussion before we vote? Hearing none. Call in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposition, please say no, and the motion carries to order. Okay, next item of business is, let's see, Ms. Jones, are you taking care of this? Special use permit, SP 1915. The name is Shadys, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to present Shadys as Mr. Marsh Burns did. The advocate is Jeremy Hitch, the owners of the, excuse me, properties High Flutus Industries, Josh Whitaker. Location is at 106 East Main Street, and the tract is a little bit less than a tenth of an acre. The Planning Commission heard this case on October 21st, and we're now before you today, tonight. There's a mix of commercial office and light industrial land uses and immediate vicinity to the subject property. The CBD district does not, does have a range of businesses permitted within it. Residential properties are also located nearby, including across railroad tracks. The planning department accepted the notification of public meetings and hearings associated with this recent related tax amendment, UDO 1901, as satisfactory to alternative means of compliance. Basically, this means most CUP special permits, special use permits are required to have a neighborhood meeting, and in this case, the tax amendment for this particular use was a few months right before this case came, so we felt as though this would be sufficient for the neighborhood meeting. The acreage is a little less than a tenth of acre. The total of three lots, they will be combined to be one lot, and the use is a private club. And this is the interior of the club and then the outside of the building. There's no open space required for this project as it's not a residential project. Only area on the site not booked upon is located at the rear, but it's encumbered by required utility easements. Therefore, it's physically impractical to apply the tree coverage or lands, other landscaping requirements of the UDO. So no street buffers, no permanent buffers, or any vehicle service area plantings. There's no lighting being proposed at this time. Inspection Department has reviewed the interior fit-up for the site and have given their approval. Parking requirements are met with existing on-street public parking along Main Street. Excuse me. There's no FEMA designated flood plain area on the site, and there are no environmentally sensitive areas on this site as well. Excuse me. There's no stormwater management required for the site. The project will use existing water and sewer connections that are in front and behind the property. Infrastructure roads and sidewalks, they're not required for this site as the roadways already fully built out and sidewalks are installed. The 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan does not have any additional recommendations for Main Street. As currently constructed, Main Street is a very into-lane facility with curb and gutter and sidewalk at this location. Therefore, this project, as proposed, may be considered consistent with the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan. Forward Transportation Plan. A review of the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greensways Master Plan revealed no additional plan recommendations in this project area. Therefore, this site, as proposed, may be considered consistent with the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greensways Master Plan. After sufficient review and plan revisions, staff finds this project, as now proposed, conforms to the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance so long as the following project specific, specific conditions are met. Prior to certificate of occupancy, the three lots must be combined to a single lot of record, and a six-foot tall fence shall be installed along the rear property line where feasible as an alternative method of compliance for satisfying the perimeter buffer screening At the 21st of October Planning Commission meeting, by unanimous vote, the Planning Commission confirmed staff's findings that CUP SP 1915 Shadys is in conformity with adopted town plans and policies. Please refer to page 71 of your packet for the motion to approve or deny this project.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Any questions for Ms. Jones on her presentation about the project?
I don't have any questions about her presentation, but I do have a question about the, the appearance of the front of the building, the owner. Is there any plan at all to, to make it look a little cleaner? I know you're trying to do the historic preservation, however, I've had a lot of comments from people that it doesn't match or fit in with the other building.
Sure, yeah. So my name is Josh Whitaker. Live at 2028 Simpkins Road, Raleigh 27603. We are, the, the final step, so, you know, trying to keep the historic fill in the go signs, we've kind of gone back and forth on how to clean up the go signs, how best to preserve them. And so we're going to, I don't know all the technical terms that my general contractor would know, but yeah, we're gonna, to the extent that we can and not harm the go signs, give it a good cleaning, and then there is going to be, I don't know if it's a sealant or a, I don't know what they call it, but, but to try to clean it up will be kind of the last thing that we, that we do. But, yeah. Yes, ma'am. Right.
Okay. And while you're there, Ms. Whitaker, thank you, Ms. Jones. I guess you were finished, and any other council members have questions for the applicant owner?
Sure.
Any?
No, but I will compliment him for the name of this LLC, High Flute Industries. That's pretty good.
So as an attorney, I don't, for the law firm, we couldn't really do much. So anytime I create an LLC for investment purposes, I always try to jazz it up a little bit.
So is this combining three, so it's combining, what was originally, three storefronts?
It, it was. So the way that it, the way that we bought it, it was kind of, kind of one, there were three parcels. There was a, I think the original owners kind of had it split into three bays, and so two of those bays were 104 East Main Street. There's a long bay that was 106 and zero Raynor Road. We have, I don't know, 20 by 20 patch of grass behind the building that has its own address, and so we're putting all three of those together into one parcel.
So will you, will you, when you were talking about a particular sign, will the, will the name Hazel's, will that remain? Will the Coca-Cola sign, will it be, remain in, kind of in its state, but cleaned as much as possible, or will it be repainted to, to be bold?
The folks that we've consulted have, have said there's no good way to clean a lot of that building without really damaging the signs. And so we're kind of going to clean around them, I guess, for lack of a better term, and kind of shine up what we can shine up, and try to leave the go signs completely...
The go sign?
Ghost. I call them ghost signs.
Okay.
Because I heard somebody else call them that once.
Does that include, and it's just curiosity, it has nothing to do with what goes on inside. Is that, does, will Hazel's be left up there as well? Is that just part of the?
Yeah, so our, our, I'm, I'm a kind of a history buff, and one of the reasons that we even bought the building, we bought the building before we know what, we knew what we wanted to do with it. And so one of the things I wanted to do was preserve the building. And so that's one of the things, we, we just, we're going to completely leave those signs there, and, and maybe one day research how to better preserve them. But for now, kind of just leave them the way they are and try not to do any damage to them.
Another question. You talked about it being a private club. This is not so much as exclusive, but as it is to conform with the liquor license?
It is. We, we got into a situation where our kitchen, the amount of, of building that we could dedicate to a kitchen, it was going to be hard to make that a restaurant under the Health Department Code and the ABC laws. And so this was kind of the, the, the best use of the space for what we wanted to do with it, and that's kind of how we ended it there. But yeah, it's definitely not going to be, our, our purpose is not to exclude. It's the same ABC permit that lets, you know, golf club serve beer and, and things like that, but it's not meant to be exclude, you know, it's not meant to exclude any particular type of person.
Yeah, the main background is that we see the, the brick pavers out front, the enhancements that have been made, front, back, sides, all working around, and then some might get the idea, well, now it's out, now you got to pay some big fee to get in after the town has, has spent money in that area. It is, it is enough to make it, I'm assuming it's enough to call it a club and an initiation fee or a membership fee, and that's it.
I believe, I believe the case law says it needs to be at least a dollar. So our, to be a member of Shadys, you'll need one, one American dollar.
It may be stated in here, Ms. Whitaker, obviously there, I guess there'll be live music here, is that right?
Our, our goal is to have live music somewhat regularly, every couple of weekends or something like that, so we've entertained that idea. Yes, sir. Not, not every night or anything like that, I guess, but, you know.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Kennedy, you have anything else?
No, I was, most, all of mine was curiosity, but...
I have a request. Since you are being a little bit humorous as well, your music's not going to be so loud that it shakes the doors and windows of the residence across the street, right?
That is, that is definitely not our goal. That is, that is definitely not our goal, and, and I would normally be in bed at this time, so I'm staying up late tonight to be here, so we are certainly going to try to be good neighbors to everybody.
The train's passing through, do shake the doors.
I think that's a, a good attitude to take, to be sensible to the neighbors that are...
Yeah, we, we really want to, we want to be a positive part of Main Street and kind of fill, you know, that building for a while, seemed like it was almost going to cave in on itself. So we are, we're really trying to take something that I think we were going to lose as a town and try to, try to use what we have to make it into something that's maybe a little more better.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? This applicant, okay. Thank you, Mr. Whitaker.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Anybody else, Ms. Jones? Okay. All right. I think we are ready to vote now.
Need a motion?
I do need a motion, yes.
In regards to CUP SP-19-15 Shadys, I move that the council accept the staff's statements regarding plan consistency in Section 5 of the report as our own and find the application meets the 10 permit criteria, Section 3.1, 4. D. Therefore, approve CUP-SP-19-15 Shadys with two site-specific conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by the staff.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Kennedy, second that. All right. Motion's properly before us. Any last comments, discussions? Hearing none. All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion's carried. So ordered. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Next item of business, Mr. Trezenberg, are you still here? Yes, okay. UDO 1902 Fee and Lue.
Yes, so this item is coming back to you just as old business on follow-up from your previous public hearing on the matter and referral to Planning Commission. This is coming to you with a recommendation to approve from them as well as from staff. So again, I don't have a formal presentation on this since we've talked about this at least twice, if not maybe three times at two work sessions. But I do have those reports available to pop up on the screen if we need to. If you have any other questions at this time, otherwise there is an ordinance drafted for you for possible approval.
Okay, and yes, there's a full-fledged memo in our packet that explains the background and all those things. Anybody have questions for Mr. Trezenberg?
Ready for a motion.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy?
Move we approve ordinance number 2019 4031 and ordinance to amend ordinance 2003 3250 entitled Garner Unified Development Ordinance for the town and its extra territorial jurisdiction.
Thank you. You okay? Mr. Singleton, seconded the motion. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none. Please vote if you're in favor of this motion by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No. And there is none. Thank you, Mr. Trezenberg. Okay, I am at, I believe we're at the place in our agenda. Committee reports, are there any? Okay. Thank you. Managers report, Mr. Manager.
Mayor Protem, we have, in, in council, we have the Garner info in your packet and also building and permitting report. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention were the two meetings coming up. We have a council orientation starting tomorrow morning at eight, and that will go until about three o'clock. So we're going to give the council-elect, as well as any existing council members that want to attend, just a overview of the town, the meeting process, any legal obligations, and talk about some of our departments and, and the agenda formulation and all those type of things, starting tomorrow. And then on your work session on November 26th, we're going to have a special CIP session starting at three o'clock, and I think the schedule is for that to go from three to five, and then we'll break, and then we'll have dinner, and then we'll start the regular meeting at six o'clock. So just a reminder, and we did invite the council-elect also to attend that meeting.
Okay, thank you. Was that, was that everything?
What, did I miss something?
We, we had some late news from DOT. I didn't know if that was okay if we shared that.
Yes, yes, yes. I didn't write that in here. Yes. Yeah, you go ahead, John.
So, Mr. Mayor Protem, council members, we did get some news from DOT this week that their, their challenges, their financial challenges are beginning to trickle down to some unexpected funding sources, including the LAP funding. And as you know, we have several, a couple of LAP projects in the works right now, one of which is the Timber Drive Sidewalk Project, which has already been let, or forbid, and also the Ackerman Hebron Road, Ackerman White Oak Hebron Road Roundabout. The district office was sort of blindsided with this news. They've passed it down to us. We were blindsided, as well as Campo was, that they've actually put future dates on not to start construction. Meanwhile, we'd already bid one of the projects for construction. So there's, not only is there unexpected news, but there's just a lack of coordination between, the, the state is not even, they're, they're handing down information without even knowing the status of projects. And so it appears from the early information we've gotten back is that there's a possibility that we can keep the two projects that we know are impacted moving forward if the town is in agreement to defer our reimbursement, and we would not be seeking reimbursement on either of these two projects for some time. So the town engineer, who couldn't be here tonight, feels like that we're probably in an okay place to be able to sign off at some point something more formal that we will probably have to get you to agree to, to defer our reimbursement to a later date. But because it was unexpected news, we just wanted to share it with you in the event that it changed dramatically in the last couple of days. So with, in, in the event that that changed again, we at least want to make you aware of that. The one project that was on the list originally, they have said that the, the secretary has, secretary's office has allowed to move forward is the Jones Sausage Road Improvements, and I'm, I'm guessing that is moving forward because the pot of money that it was being reimbursed from is a different, different fund, because it was with the economic development funding. So we just want to make you aware of that in the event that it does come to a point of slowing any projects down, but as of right now, we believe it will simply be us having to agree, or council having to agree, to defer our reimbursement to a later date.
Okay. Not the kind of news we like to hear, but we have to deal with the reality of it. Anybody have a question, comment for John? Okay. Mr. Turnip, if it's okay, I may just ask for council reports, and then you're going to lead us into the closed session, so can I reverse that order? You have a problem with that? Tell you what, we, we don't have to...
One, A1, A3, and A...
Well, so before we go into closed session, I'm going to suggest we go ahead and have council reports at this time. I'll start with Mr. Finch.
Have nothing to report at this time.
Barringer?
Just a question. We, we sent a letter to DOT saying that we were not happy about our projects being taken off their list. Did we, we get an acknowledgement that they received the letter?
I have not received anything. We can inquire. I don't, I don't think any staff has received any acknowledgement of the letter.
Okay. Anything else that, Mr. Singleton?
Want to mention that the contractor working on the Spring Drive sidewalks is working at a very fast pace. If you want to see some sidewalks being put in now, they're putting sidewalk on Spring Drive right now. That contract was let, and they were out there the next day working. God bless them. I wish we could have that contractor that had been doing some work on the rec center, but that's another story. I won't even go there. But anyway, they are moving along very fast, a rapid pace on the sidewalks on Spring Drive. So I would like to go get a chance to drive by and look at it. I mean, they had a lot of folks out there working today. Good to see. That's all for now.
Thank you.
Mr. Singleton, in defense, we have seen more work being done at the rec center recently, not necessarily every day, but quite a bit more than what we've seen before.
That's a plus. About two years late, but anyway. That's a plus.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes. Anything to report on the rec center that can be reported with any, or that you care to report?
I may have to defer that to the attorney. I don't know what we can discuss about that.
Here are... Mr. Roger, Attorney Rogers has been working with that and meeting between the bonding company and the contractor to practice tension and get towards executing an agreement. I'm, I'm not sure whether that's been finalized or not, and I think it's...
It has not been finalized.
We'll see, see, see how that goes.
And that, the date's different than what you just mentioned, but it has not been finalized. I mean, they, there is some activity out there. They're, they set the curving for Highway 70 and got the string line approved by DOT. They're doing a lot of interior painting and touch-up inside. The sign company was out today installing some of the signage. The contractor expects to have, expects to have some paving done on Purvis Street by the end of this week, and then moving, I think, over to Monique, you know, in the next week or two. What else? They are going to, yeah, I guess that's, that's the major, some of the major items. Matt, John, any other major items we need to mention?
I think the only other thing I'd say is that we are, we are working closely with the contractor to ensure that the schedule they can provide us is backed up with a thorough list of the resources and subcontractor resources that it would take to meet the deadline. So we are, we are still working through getting all of the confirmations that make us comfortable with whatever agreement we can reach that would be agreed to by the security company as well.
And just so there's no surprises, the date, the completion date is going to, is going to go beyond January 1st. Bill mentioned the end of the year.
Maybe a week into January 1st.
Yeah, maybe a week or so is what's proposed, but I just, I just wanted to lay that out so there's no surprises when you see that 2020 date.
Next Tuesday, our meeting starting at 3:00, is that upstairs?
It's, the CIP work session will be upstairs from 3:00 to 5:00, and then when we break and come back, we'll come back to this council chambers.
The meeting is coming Friday morning. Is that at the G-PAC for the...
The meeting this coming Friday morning, is that at the G-PAC for the Parks and Recreation Plan?
Yes, that's correct.
Nine to twelve?
I didn't mention that meeting, yes. Yes.
Why did I have that at White Deer Park?
Oh, you're right. It is at White Deer Park. We've had the previous ones at G-PAC, but this one is at the nature center. That's correct. Thanks for that correction.
Turning at nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock, yes. Nine to twelve.
Go ahead, Mr. Kennedy, I'm sorry.
Okey-dokey.
Consultant.
At the session next Tuesday, could you review for us some procedures? Because there's going to be a lot of stepping down and stepping up and stepping sideways and back and forth. And we'd like to look like we've been to that dance before, but we might need some instructions, and that would be helpful. Anything to report on the depot?
The depot, right now, the footing has been installed. So we have the contractor working on that. We have to, even to move a building out of the right-of-way, we have to get right-of-entry permission from N C Railroad, which we've received. And we also have to get permission, formal permission, from Norfolk Southern as the user of the railroad. They leased the railroad. So we're working with them, and also N C Railroad is working on our behalf to get that permission. It's usually a long process, but we think we're going to get it expedited since we're moving something out. And our plan right now for the mover is for the mover to be out there on December fourteenth with the backup date of December twenty-first. But both of those dates are contingent on getting Norfolk Southern's approval to have work done, being done, construction-related work being done in the right-of-way. Their railroad right-of-way.
Anything that can be reported on the Joan Sausage Road realignment? I'm thinking that some preliminary information is coming out from the consultant and maybe and/or D O T. Is there anything to be reported, or is it just too early?
I'll turn it over to Mr. Trezenberg.
Give you an update from the approved timeline in the contract. We were actually ahead of schedule as of November first. We were supposed to have our final kind of draft alignment proposal, as well as an estimate of some costs associated with that. We actually got that on October eighteenth. So the next, the current phase that we're in now is trying to get the stakeholder meeting put together for the property owners along that corridor. Having a little trouble getting everybody together on the same date. We may have to take it in two groups. But the schedule called for that to be completed by the sixth of December, and we're still on track for that.
I hope that can be done, just so many... There's not many rumors that are going around out there, but the rumors that are going wind up having some, you know, just aren't helpful at all. And getting them together, I agree, is a good idea. The main report I'm getting back is that, excuse me, the grapevine, although the leaves are off most every grapevine you see, the grapevine that I hear from sometimes is still very green. And we were hearing that there's likely a change or potentially a change from going under the railroad to going over the railroad and then not being able to grasp the impact of what it's going to look like and how it would impact the properties on either side of the railroad or to the viewing public coming down either road. So we've had civic circles, we've had presentation on planned improvements. And I hope we can keep those intact because that would be a tremendous loss to, for somebody to pick up their marbles and go elsewhere. So I would hope, I wish you well, luck in getting that together and soon. And I would do anything from where I stand to encourage the patients to get there to hear what you've got to say. So you're trying to get that done by no later than December, say, six. Six, is that a Friday?
That is a Friday, yes. And to kind of further some of that, I did go ahead and send out an email kind of summarizing the assumptions that went into the draft design as we were presented as staff by the consulting firm. And so those assumptions have been conveyed out to the stakeholders, so at least they have that information to digest prior to the meeting. Because it was determined that it will need to go back over as opposed to under. Under just created a multitude of issues that, at a very high level, were not apparent.
Very well, thank you. Rodney, you got a meeting scheduled all day tomorrow, most all day? Is there any portion of it that I need to be there for?
No.
Thank you. The construction projects listing is very interesting. I call your attention to that. The total investment of permits issued this past month is seventy-two million dollars and change. One of them being a sixty-seven million dollar facility on Joan Sausage Road. And John, I'd love for you to tell us about that.
I believe that is the permit for the conveyor system that will go in the Amazon facility. So the conveyor system itself is...
It's not any more than what we've already heard?
I'm sorry?
It's not anything more than what we've already heard?
Correct. It's just a substantial sub-portion of that project.
But that's conveyor system.
And other internal workings of the project, yes, sir.
Well, that's still, I'm glad that's going... Is it any further discussion or update on when they'll get started on the roadway improvements?
I do not have an update. Our standing call for the project is tomorrow. And so I think Mr. Stallings will be on that. So we'd be able to get you an update after that call. But I do not have an updated schedule on the road project.
Okay. Last thing. And this is... One of the last recommendations I would have. But just in the last, literally, the last two, twenty-four months, we've probably, we've approved right at the development of approximately two thousand lots that will impact New Bethel Church Road. While that's a D O T road, and D O T is spending, going to be spending money to replace the bridge, it's still going to be Garner citizens traveling on it. And I think that's, it's one of the reasons I asked a question earlier was, is there any potential for it being anything other than a two-lane road? And Jeff explained, I think it was Jeff, that where there are turning areas, there's going to be a third lane for a turning lane. But I would, I think that this is the kind of thing that might be added to a C I P that to keep us alert as to what improvements need to be made for the safety and well-being of the people. That's when you've got two thousand lots and two and a half, three people per lot at full development, that's at least five to six thousand people. And they're not all going to be running on that road at the same time by any means. But issues of site distance, vertical and horizontal, the width of the lane, a shoulder, whatever kind of improvements may be needed to make it a more serviceable road. And finally, the one thing that doesn't cost a lot of money except skin off your back is how you treat the speed limit. But if you would keep that one kind of on focus, that's a road that's going to bear some... It won't be the last time we hear from it. So with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. I wanted to observe that even as your status changes, I'm assuming that the leaves will remain green on the grapevine that you have access to.
I don't know.
You can leave it there, yeah.
That depends on other people.
I just, the interesting, Mr. Kennedy points out, New Bethel Road.
It's after the fact.
I know, but Old Stage Road has like five times the traffic now. I'll point that out. I mean, you know, we can pick a road, we can pick any road in Garner. I mean, we're putting the house homes there, but you get on Garner Road about five-thirty, and you're backed up past Angie's. Get on Creets Road, because people are cutting through off. I mean, it's everywhere. You can't just pick one road and say, well, we need to pay attention to it. It's everywhere. I mean, Old Stage, it gets me, Aversboro and Timber, there's eighty-seven hundred trips a day. That's a six-lane road going to a five-lane road, two five-lane roads here. Old Stage and Van Dors, eight thousand trips a day, two-lane to two-lane. You need some improvement somewhere. That's an intersection that needs improvement. I'm just saying. Read that whole plan that Mr. Patel prepared for us and go all over town, and you'll see all these numbers. And, you know, New Bethel, I don't disagree with what you're saying. If they fix the Daddlin Bridge down there to start with, we could plan on some things. But until they do the bridge, we're sitting here twirling our thumbs. But, I mean, there's places all over town that traffic's an issue. You know, when people mention city, I'm like, why don't you mention Old Stage? It has the same issue.
Yeah, I'm looking in town.
Yeah.
There you go.
Well, I'll tell you, Old Stage, part of Old Stage is in town, too.
Ms. Behringer, you have one other item you want to mention?
I do have one other item. The Women's Club Christmas tour. I'll be... Okay. December eighth, three, five, one to five, and I have tickets there. Fifteen dollars each or two for twenty-five. And I have an unlimited number of them, so please let me know how many you need.
Thank you. And just a quick word from the Mayor Protem. I want to thank all those involved with the Veterans Day celebration we had again this year. Well done. Great way to honor our veterans, and I'm proud our town continues to do that. If the engineer was here, I was going to ask him about an update on the long stoplight at Timber in Aversboro, but I'll wait till he gets here. So, Mr. Attorney, before we go to closed session, reports from you, sir. Okay. All right. Do I have a motion that we move into closed session? Can we just mention the site that the attorney previously gave?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we go into closed session per the statute that the attorney mentioned for the different items that we will be addressing.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. We'll adjourn to closed session and then come back for any final business.